Meeting to order at seven two P M this October twenty fifth, two thousand twenty one. If I could ask what was on the stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mister Hoffman, if I could pick on you and ask you to call roll call please.
Uh, yes, uh, Mister Hoffman, aye. Mister Neil, aye, there, aye.
Larry Ravitch.
Larry, yeah.
Yeah, here.
Yeah. Sorry about that.
We also have Mister Rosetti.
Oh, Mister Rosetti also.
Rosetti.
Am I here? Yeah, you are here, Brian, sorry, yeah.
Brad Rock, also Brad, for the record.
Okay, they should have little sheets that we don't.
And if I could have everyone review the minutes from our last meeting? Motion to approve the minutes from our last meeting, September twenty seventh.
I'll second it.
Mister Ravitch.
Aye.
Mister Neil?
Aye.
Hoffman?
Aye.
Mister Rosetti?
Aye.
Mister Schuster, do I actually have to vote since that's only four?
You're muted, Mark.
You're muted, Mark.
Sorry about that, you, you have sufficient votes, four votes, a majority, it's certainly, it's unanimous among the trustee commissioners present, so you may vote, but you need not.
I'll vote aye. As we have no old new or old business, we can move right on to the new business. Uh, first item is a public hearing regarding a petition for variance filed by Mister Tully as the property owner of three oh four Park Street to vary the setback and building height regulations, village code to allow for a proposed garage expansion in an R two residential zoning district. So I will just take a motion to open the public hearing. So. Uh, Mister Hoffman?
Aye.
Mister Rosetti?
Aye.
Mister Neil?
Aye.
Mister Ravitch?
Aye.
Call this public hearing open, Mister.
Mister Schuster, is there anything for the, for the record that you need to report on? Public notices and whatnot?
Yes, thank you, public notice was published in the Daily Herald newspaper on October eighth, two thousand twenty one, the petitioner has informed me and I invited him to bring proof tonight to the meeting that he both posted a notice and mailed notice to adjacent property owners within two hundred and fifty feet of his premises.
Um, I do have the receipts from the certified mail certificates being sent and I did file them with the village clerk if you'd like to see the actual receipts.
I can attest that I saw them both.
Yeah, I saw those filed with the court.
Would you like to speak, uh, I understand you may have some.
Yeah, I think Josh had a slide that, um, I've referred to a couple, but thank God with the audience here, I just wanted to give a brief description of the property and what we're looking to do, that's all right?
By leave.
All right, is that, is that Mister Tully speaking, I can't, he's not on camera.
Let's stand here, can you see me?
Yes, Mister Schuster.
Okay.
Um, he should be, he should be sworn to tell the truth, please, I can do that.
If you, if you could please, Mister Schuster.
Can you raise your right hand, sir?
Yes.
You swear affirm the testimony, you're about to give in this hearing of the truth?
Yes.
State your name, please.
Cheryl Tully.
And you're one of the two petitioners for the property of three oh four Park Street, correct?
That's correct, the other is my wife Bridget Tully, she's at home tonight with kids.
Correct, but she's a, she's one of the title holders to that property, I believe.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, so if you would address the commission and tell them why you are asking for these variances?
So I'll start just by giving a review of the, the property, so my wife and I, Bridget, we live down the street on Jackson, Jackson and Park, um, we have a corner lot and you can see here the, the main house structure on the corner, the front yard toward the north, up is north, um, and then what we're applying for, for the zoning variance is the detached garage on the southwest side of the property. Um, to the west of the garage, you'll see an alleyway, um, then to the north of the garage, you'll see a driveway, um, and then just east of that, there's a brick and iron fence along with numerous trees and such and landscaping across the property. Um, the current garage, um, we haven't been able to date it, but we're, we're pretty sure it's, it's nineteen seventies or predating that, just given the type of materials that were used and the lumber and that sort of thing, um, so the, the garage isn't disrepair, it needs, um, some serious structure work, part of the, the west wall is falling off the foundation, so we want to bring it back up to standards, um, in doing that, we were hoping to also be able to, um, expand the garage slightly, um, so we could have better accommodations for our family. Um, the problem with that is you can see is the garage, um, lies just over the property line actually from our, um, last survey that we got when we purchased the house six years ago, um, the garage lays over the west property line by about a foot, foot and a half, um, and then it's north of the southern property line by two and a half feet, so the current zoning setbacks, um, I believe from an alleyway, you need to be ten feet away and from any other property line is five feet, so obviously this building's grandfathered in and, um, were we to add on to it, be adding on to a non-performance, so it wouldn't comply with the current zoning requirements, um, so since we're just looking to add on to the building, we're asking, we're asking for the zoning variance so that we potentially be able to utilize the current, uh, foundation and structure of the garage to, um, you know, essentially, go the, I mean, we're gonna start completely demo the existing building. Um, the, so we are also asking for the height provision, uh, the current garage is sixteen feet, uh, we're proposing to go to twenty-three, uh, we're not sure what we're gonna have to do to the building, um, like I said, though, the, we're not sure to be extended the repair that it's gonna need, so we might be able to add on to the height as well, we're not sure, um, so that's just another extra provision to put in there. I think that pretty much covers it, do you guys have any other questions or anything for me, anything I can help clarify?
Could you clarify on the, the west easement of the property, you said that it, it is a foot and a half from existing or it's a foot and a half over the existing property line?
Yeah, it's a good point, I should have clarified, so it's actually a foot and a half over the property line, so as part of what we were asking for, we would move it back to the property line.
Gotcha.
Yes.
You're asking zero clearance.
Correct.
Which would bring it then at least back onto your property line. Still not within recognition, I got you.
And currently, uh, what's the garage currently used for other than garage, had any living floors above the garage or anything like that?
No, um, it's, it's just used for car storage at the moment, I'm sort of cars and so we use it primarily just for that.
Okay.
I have a question about the height, what's the reason for your request for twenty-three feet?
The, the reason for that is when we add on to the structure, the roof will naturally have to increase in height if we keep the same pitch, um, I have not been able to, um, necessarily engage with contractors to a high enough degree to know exactly what we're gonna need there, just because I don't know what requirements I have to work in, so, um, I know that we're gonna need some height alleviation for that and then if, depending on what we have to do with the roof from a, um, structural standpoint, potentially add on like attic stakes for storage, that's really it.
Twenty, twenty-three feet is exceptionally high for a garage.
Yeah, so for the, um, part of that is the, the current garage already has, um, ten-foot ceilings on it and so we, we could potentially keep that with adding on a loft space, which would require an additional height.
So just to be clear, you're talking about, um, taking the entire structure down and rebuilding completely?
Um, not necessarily, we're hoping that we can utilize the existing framework except for the west wall, which is currently falling off the foundation, so we know that wall is going to have to be rebuilt, but the hope is that we can salvage some of the other framework on the existing building and the foundation.
Which is the wall that's separated?
The wall, that's the west wall that's facing the alley that has the.
So in short, you're looking to just basically rebuild the garage as it is existing, getting the west wall at least to the property line and then keeping it sort of as is depending on pitch with the roof and that it may need to be higher than it is currently?
Yeah, we're, we're actually looking to expand the square footage slightly, so we're gonna expand the east wall a few feet out, um, and that would drive the change to the roof line and such.
Okay, that's interesting.
Yeah, I actually, I don't know if it's possible, Josh, I had it drawn up in CAD and stuff like that to help give a, a better idea of what that might look like, I don't know if it's possible to share that or not.
I was curious, off the top of your head, do you know what, uh, with pitch you're gonna be going with, your contractor has recommended or?
No, wait, I haven't gotten that level of detail of the contractor yet. Yeah, so this, this is just, I, I dream, um, obviously as part of the, the zoning variance request, there's required site plans and architectural, um, landscapes, which I just, I did myself, so here shown is basically the garage expanded six feet, moved back to the property line, um, so that, that kind of lays out what that would look like. Yeah, there's a couple other views, I have some actual pictures of the, the garage on the alleyway too, it might kind of help, um, give some perspective of what you're looking at there. It's a bit unique with the, with the driveway and the garage parallel to the alleyway, which makes us, what makes it difficult.
You see the store cars?
Yes, this is a hobby, not a business.
Oh, and, and there's no plans for plumbing or sewer lines or anything else in the garage, correct?
Um, that hasn't necessarily been detailed out, um, I had entertained the idea of possibly putting heat in the garage, but.
Okay, heat, but no bathroom or?
No, no.
Okay, all right.
No, it's, it's not intended to be living space.
Okay, we've had, we've had situations before where they asked for variance on a height where it was intended to be used as a living space.
Okay.
That's why I asked.
Yeah.
Can you go back to the, the pictures, Mister, like the actual, um, image of the alley? So as it sits currently, that west wall is a foot and a half outside of your property line, correct?
According to the flat survey that I received when I bought the house, yes.
So, I mean, just, so that west wall, you would almost give up the foundation that, that it's sitting on to bring it in that extra foot left?
Yeah, I think we would have to, my hope is that they might be able to still utilize that foundation somehow, whether it's attaching to it underground or, I'm not sure to be honest with you, but, um, yeah, I figured that that was obviously a fair provision for what I'm asking for is at least bring the building back, so I, I don't know what that's gonna mean to be honest with you, it might end up meaning that the whole building potentially is get torn down anyways, or it might take, the cost might get close enough to where that makes the most sense, but I'm not sure until we get that level of detail, I know what we can do.
What's the level, I mean, you've been there for six years, what's the level of traffic in that alley zone?
It's, it's very light, there's only, um, one person who uses the alleyway, there's, you can see on the left-hand side, there's fences and a number of other garages up in the alley already, but they're all facing the east side towards the street, the, um, neighbor just to the, um, southwest, I mean, you can see the car in that picture, they're actually, they're the only ones that use the alleyway.
And if, well, that the title, they cleared that, they cleared, the title company approved it, the way, the way it's set up now, where it's a foot and a half or whatever you said across, over the property line?
I'm not sure how the, that whole process works necessarily, they disclosed it to us when we bought the property, had mentioned it as a potential risk, there was no like sign off necessarily that I remember at least. Okay, so I assume.
The, uh, title companies often for a very long-standing encroachment of that type will, uh, they'll waive it for purposes of your loan, but put it on your policy for your, for as owner, so, so they're not likely to, uh, title company that is, is not likely to step up and agree to pay the cost of fixing the situation, but the, they recognize that the buyer, the new homeowner is alerted to the fact, I, I'm guessing, uh, but that's my experience, what usually happens in a case like that.
Yeah, that sounds accurate to the experience that we had.
Thank you.
How high is that garage now?
I measured it sixteen feet, I think that's pretty accurate, it's probably a little low, I measured from, um, the, the inside essentially, the ceiling goes most of the way up to the peak from the inside of the garage.
Okay.
The primary residence, Mister Tully, is it a, is it a two-story home, is it a, is it a bungalow?
Um, yeah, it's, it's a two-story home, this, this is my simplification of the house, um, but the height and scale of everything there is accurate, it's all drawn in inches, so that, that gives you.
Just be concerned with the single thing, or, you know, like a ranch style home with a twenty-three foot garage, including that property.
Yeah.
At least trying to ensure that, you know, the height is somewhat, you know, relevant or equal to the houses of, of the height of the rest, so.
Yeah, our house, um, is probably a decent amount taller than normal two-story house, we, um, the first floor is actually raised like four or five feet off of like ground level from our house, so you have to walk up to the ground level, and then we have, um, ten-foot ceilings on the first floor, and then it's a, a pretty steep pitch as well, so.
And drawing, which one is the house and which one is the garage?
The house is the, the one Josh is circling there.
Okay.
And the, the house is the, is the little one, um, the bottom loft, that's it.
Our garage, no, no. Now, now I could be wrong on this, but I think our current statutes say that the peak of the garage cannot exceed the peak of the house. Mister Schuster, am I correct on that?
Well, I, I didn't mean to say anything about the peak, the, the, what, I mean, the, the height of an accessory building is limited to fifteen feet, he's asking for twenty-three.
Correct, but the, but the, but the height of the garage cannot exceed the roof peak of the house.
I don't, I don't think that's a rule, uh, although in general, uh, I believe a house can be thirty feet and a garage can be fifteen, so that naturally allows for the peak of the house to exceed the peak of the garage, to flip that over, it requires the kind of variance that we're talking about tonight.
Okay, but it couldn't be the other way around, the garage couldn't be thirty and the house fifteen.
Should not.
Okay, okay.
So Mister Tully, a variance requires some element of hardship, have you got a statement to make about that to the commission?
Um, so the, the hardship would really just lie in the fact that the unique layout of the property would, um, it would potentially put a, a large financial burden on expanding the building versus if we didn't have the zoning variance, um, the other, the other piece of it is, you know, the, the trees and stuff around the house really add to the aesthetic of not just our property, but the, the neighborhood in general, and, uh, it'd be a shame to have to cut down trees to accommodate a garage if that's what we were to do.
Okay.
So Mister Schuster talked about the, the mailers that went out, uh, or as published in the Daily Herald, and you have the certified receipt with the court that the mailers went out to your neighbors, um, being that this is a public hearing, now we, you have to speak if they were objecting to this, but then you had any conversation with your neighbors about the move from the seed, you know, you know, just from your perspective since you're not here this evening?
Um, I've spoken to all of my neighbors, except to the, the neighbors to the south of us, that residences aren't occupied right now, so we did make sure that, um, that, that she had gotten, uh, the mail that we had sent out and the notice, but I haven't spoken to her personally, um, all of our other neighbors we've, we've talked to and they don't seem to have any issues with it, so.
Yeah, and, and so the record reflects the fact that there is no one other than yourself here from the public. So, playing devil's advocate, the issue is you couldn't expand or frankly even keep it its current size if you were forced to rebuild it and get it within the, the code, within the, the restrictions away from the alley and away from property lines.
Yeah, we're.
And not, I'm sorry, forgive me, and not have to remove part of that fencing or a tree.
Correct, yes, that's right.
I myself, the, the twenty-three feet is still, seems a little excessive for me, uh, I am not calling myself a contractor by any means, uh, by having some limited knowledge of roof pitch and roof load requirements, you should be able to maintain a fifteen-foot height if you stick with a four twelve roof pitch, obviously your contractor, your architect would have to design that roof truss system for the load, that would be expected in a midwestern home as far as weight of snow, et cetera, um, even for, because I think the garage currently is twenty-two by thirty, twenty-two by forty?
Two by forty.
And you're looking for thirty by forty?
Correct.
Yeah, even if you stick, obviously, less than ideal, you'd lose some of that roof space, there will be storage options with a fourteen twelve roof pitch, you should still be able to stick under fifteen, you'd squeeze in under fifteen feet at thirty-foot by forty-foot.
With the eight foot side, yeah.
Um, so I'd almost actually, my own thinking would be I would actually throw it at your contractor, your architect and see what they can calculate on that roof trussing system.
See a flat roof is absolutely less than ideal, but you should still be able to maintain a certain slope on that roof and get under fifteen feet.
Correct, I think that, and would probably come with some other, um, restrictions, I'm not sure either, I'm not a professional architect, but I think just like, there's support underneath, they'd probably have to add beams and stuff like that, um, I'm not looking at any hard numbers here, I'm certainly willing to compromise, so if twenty-three feet you think is excessive, maybe there's something less than that that we think might be more manageable.
Now, let me add one more question, uh, are you gonna use standard-sized garage doors on that?
Yeah, that's my plan, just to just.
After that sixteen-foot, or, uh, that's what I'm thinking is that if you're using, if you were planning on using.
No, just like, uh, the, I think what I had it drawn up with that Josh is sharing is sixteen by eight garage.
Okay, okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that, Mister Tully, what, you had drawn up what?
The, the plans that I had drawn up anticipated using a sixteen by eight garage door, I don't have any plans to use a, a taller, non-standard door on the building.
Okay, thanks.
Way the ordinance is actually written.
Yes.
Unless otherwise permitted, as an accessory to a business, manufacturing or authorized special use, so if this was just a garage, or a four twelve pitch, would still get under fifteen feet, but you did mention that you do like rebuilding vehicles.
Yeah, I have a car lift that I'm planning to put in the garage if we're required.
Yeah, and that would still fit, my neighbor has one, he has a standard garage, he has a lift in it.
So you are planning on putting a vehicle lift in there?
Yes.
For me, that's actually the clincher right there. Vehicle lift, whether it was an actual business or a very aggressive hobby, would require special use.
Okay.
Being that you're not an architect, Mister Tully, you've shared that with us a couple times, I mean, where did you come up with the twenty-three feet, I guess, that's, that's what seems to be the hangup, I mean, twenty-three feet is what we're talking about, you have some room that, you know, I don't want to make a recommendation, I'm not an architect either, but, was there a reason you landed on twenty-three feet compared to anything else?
Yeah, I believe that's what I had drawn up, so I drew the building up with, um, I, I went to the high end on everything to come up with what I anticipated potentially being worst case, so I think, um, I have the models on me, I could double check, but I think I did ten or twelve-foot ceilings on the front level and then with a higher pitch to accommodate like a, I think it was like a six by seven loft area, so that's with like the trussing that you can get prefabricated essentially, and that's what got me to the twenty-three feet, I actually used like the, um, garage builder on the NARS to get the pitch number for that.
I, I, I myself, before you look at tool.
It's, uh, it's a dangerous tool.
Mister Schuster, um, procedurally, uh, we have Mister Tully in front of us tonight looking for, uh, a variance, our recommendation will go to the village board for their approval, um, after these two meetings, if this variance is approved, does the city see Mister Tully again, I mean, meaning if we provide this variance, he could pull a permit and on this property, he could build a twenty-three-foot garage and we would never see him again or be able to see those plans again?
Would, would the plan commission see the plans?
Correct.
No, no, you wouldn't, it, if, if the variance was approved, it would go to the building department and in accordance with whatever conditions are, uh, part of that approval, the building department would then issue a, a permit or be able to issue a permit.
Up to whatever we allow to.
Yeah, where the final good signs will say on zoning.
It does not go to the village board?
Oh, it does, it would go to the village board, uh, based on your recommendation for approval or approval with conditions. Or denial, I mean, you could do that as well, you know.
Mister Ray, is there any chance you could pull up the provided picture of the garage east side view?
Sure.
I don't think there's anything that shows the inside of the premises or any of the building plans in, uh, some detail.
Yeah, what I'm actually getting at here, Mister Schuster, on this one is basically maintaining the character of the garage as proposed in relation to the house, um, so Mister Tully, on the right-hand side of this picture, we're looking at the east side of your, the home itself, correct?
That's correct, yeah. So this, this is the east view, our house is a little bit unique, there's kind of, yeah, it's kind of hard to decide what's really the front, the entrance actually points to the kitty corner of the, the street.
What I'd almost actually like to, just kind of for conversation's sake, uh, if the front elevation of the garage, like as you were walking down the driveway towards the garage, almost just.
Yeah, it's the next picture.
Almost basically to. Almost basically to, if that front elevation of the garage could match this view of the home, I think that would satisfy the character of the property as a whole. Because I know a lot of our modern ordinances, the homes have to match in a certain aspect as far as the character, the architecture. Obviously, you wouldn't want like a Drasman home right next to a Crasman home, right next to a post-modernistic Frank Lloyd Wright type. But with that roof pitch and especially accessory use being a vehicle remodeler, I would say that actually I think would be the, the best compromise we could probably look to if, if during the architectural process, if you could speak to your contractor and maybe have them match the character of this end of the home on the front of the garage, that allows for your roof pitch to get the extra elevated height. Still matches the character of the neighborhood.
You're saying that's the argument, that's, that would be the rationale for allowing the variance on the height of the outbuilding?
Yeah, with the special use.
To your purpose.
The overall purpose is the actual need for a lift in the garage, which would require elevated ceilings and or roofs. Uh, but obviously, we wouldn't just want a giant twenty-three-foot box.
Yeah, I understand. Just so I understand fully, I, I assume you mean like the characteristics of the dormer?
Yeah.
Like trying to bring those elements into the garage.
Yeah, a little bit. And it wouldn't have to require a window, but you know, if it was a squashed version of this dormer perspective.
Yeah, yeah, I think that would actually be really tasteful to keep that. That's something that, um, we were actually looking at potentially doing anyway, just with the coloring of our house. You can see that it's not clear in this picture, but the upper level is actually brick as well. It's just dyed a different color in the bottom. And so, we were talk, talking about trying to keep that element as well, just the buildings are really cohesive.
Mr. Chairman, just to be clear, th- this picture is the Park Street view. Is that right, Mr. Tully?
Yes, that's right.
And the driveway comes off of Jackson, correct?
Yes, that's right, yes.
So, all right, so that you, you could match this, this front of the house, but it would actually be on the side street? The view.
Yeah, it would be basically kind of making the front view of the garage very similar to this east view of the home.
Yeah, I, I, I understand. It, it's not the same Jackson Street view. It's the front view.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Just wanted to make that clear.
Mr. Chairman, with all due respect, um, I don't think it's the function of this committee to design this house. And I don't think designing a house has anything to do with the matter at hand. The, uh, matter at hand is, do we want to allow for a variance, whatever it looks like?
I, I, I do understand that, but again, there are portions of our ordinances that require a certain amount of character matching. So, that was the only reason I was bringing it up. I'm not mandating it. I was just saying, from that perspective, if, if this is an opportunity to bring a building or a property more in alignment with our code, now's the opportunity.
Then is this conversation premature because he does not have a final draft, a final, uh, artist rendering, a final materials list? I- i- is, is this conversation too soon?
It's a very fair point.
The, the problem that I'm having is that it doesn't seem fair to get contractors involved to the extent where you need that level of detail when you don't know what you can do. Um, so you almost have to commit to a contractor at that point before you even know what your options are. And so, that, that's the reason that I haven't gone to that level. I have actually had contractors come out, but I kind of get the same response, you know, they're, they're not really sure how to work around all the different things that I need because it's so, you know, we're not sure what, what I can do.
You got a chicken and an egg.
Well, I would look at it as, you know, the, the first lowest hanging fruit is the property line. Uh, Mr. Tully's already committed to rectifying that, brings the structure within the property line. We can address the setbacks. We're obviously the ones that can make that call. Uh, for conversation purposes, I'm, I'm willing to allow for that variance. The height, I think we've accounted for, and that's just, again, that's me.
Yeah, I mean, a- a- anything that jumps out at you in this proposal is the twenty-three-foot issue.
Are you ready to close the public version of the hearing?
I think we are. Uh, I will entertain a.
Last chance, I'm sorry, Mr. Tully, last chance for.
I have nothing else to add, thank you.
I will entertain the motion to close this public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. Thirty-seven, seven thirty-seven.
Mr. Rosetti?
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman?
Aye.
Mr. Rappich?
Aye.
Mr. Neal?
Aye.
Okay, this public hearing is officially closed. Onto our next item. Our. Providing the both of our.
It can be discussed before that.
Still have to call the item, uh. Our discussion to motion recommending the approval of a variance, uh, at three oh four Park Street, vary the setback and building regulations. The village code allow for a garage to be set back zero feet from the alley instead of ten feet, to be set back at the current distance from the southern lot line instead of five feet and to be at a height of twenty-three feet instead of fifteen.
Okay. Now, we, we can address all that and we can delete the twenty-three feet or modify that to whatever number of feet we think is reasonable. Or do we have to eliminate the twenty-three-feet part completely?
Well, the way this is written, all those, all those, all those criteria are in one motion. Or, or in one, in one, yeah, in, in one motion for approval. Would we, would we have to amend the motion?
You could make, you could break it into two or three separate motions if that will assist the commission in its deliberations and voting.
Okay. Then in that case, I suggest we break this up into three separate parts.
How do we go about doing that, Mr. Schuster? Just to vote verbal?
Well, there's no, there's no motion on the floor yet that I heard.
You don't have to take any formal action on, as far as the agenda goes. You can simply make a motion.
Basically, I have to make a motion on the height setback, sir.
Before we get any further, can Mr. Ray or Mr. Schuster speak to the spirit, reason, rationale of the current code or zoning for the setbacks?
I, I surely cannot speak to it. Uh, it was created.
Okay.
Perhaps Mr. Schuster can.
What, what would you like me to address exactly?
The reason for the current codes.
The, the setbacks specifically.
Okay, the code by different districts, uh, uh, R-one, R-two, R-three, uh, code has longstanding setback rules. It's, it's to, uh, provide some spacing between the uses on neighboring properties. Uh, you know, so side yards and backyards and front yards are required so that, uh, uh, there's, um, some open space, uh, between, uh, different uses, different, uh, e- even different residential uses in the same zone. So, the, the code specifically allows the village to consider requests to vary those yards uh, when, uh, there is a particular hardship, uh, or some other unique circumstance of the property in question that would justify, uh, you know, basically writing a, a separate zoning rule for a particular property. So, uh, if it's unique circumstances, uh, it will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. Uh, and, uh, the particular physical surroundings or shape of the lot or some topographical conditions, that really wouldn't be the case here. It's a pretty flat lot. Uh, uh, create a particular hardship more than a mere inconvenience than, uh, the, uh, you as the planning and zoning commission and the village board can consider, uh, varying the strict rules of the zoning code uh, for an applicant such as Mr. Tully.
So, the setbacks in this current zoning code are for character, aesthetics, usage, not fire, safety, anything like that?
Correct. No, it's really not a, a life safety or, or fire regulation. It's, it's an aesthetic rule.
Okay, thank you. That was the last track I just brushed. Mr. Chairman?
So, Chairman, I would like, um, I would like to make a motion, uh, to a section of the village code to allow for the garage to be set back from the alley.
Aye.
The, uh, Aaron, I'm not, I'm not sure. I heard that motion.
Mr. Chairman, could you repeat the motion?
Make a. On the, uh, zero-foot setback from the alley, Mr. Rosetti, so I, I plan on making these three separate motions as, as discussed. So, this motion, Mr. Rosetti, would be to allow, uh, for a variance in the village code to allow for a garage, uh, to be set back zero feet from the alley instead of ten feet. Thank you, Mr. Neal.
Aye.
Correct.
Mr. Hoffman?
Aye.
Rosetti?
Aye.
Mr. Neal?
Aye.
Motion passed, four-zero, two absents.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make another motion. Uh, this will be, uh, variance to the setback, uh, at the southern lot line, um, to allow a variance to, to, uh, allow the current distance from the southern lot line instead of the five feet that is currently the village ordinance.
I'll second that also.
Is that Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Neal?
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman?
Aye.
Mr. Rappich?
Aye.
Mr. Rosetti?
Nay.
Hey, Aaron, you're on the roll.
So, that's three, one, uh, in favor of that motion.
Correct.
Correct.
All right, which leaves us at the height.
The height.
I'm gonna get you to move here, Chairman.
And.
I would like to make, uh, a motion, Mr. Chairman, uh, variance to the village code regarding the height of this structure, uh, be twenty-three feet instead of the current code of fifteen.
I'll second that also.
Mr. Rosetti?
Nay.
Mr. Hoffman?
Nay.
Mr. Neal?
Aye.
Mr. Rappich?
Nay.
So, that is three nays, one aye.
Right, motion fails. So, you recommend against that.
Correct.
Seems like it sounds like the lady, uh, commissioned the numbers. Um, so, so that vote in essence, um, was keeping it at fifteen feet.
Correct. Or any variance beyond fifteen.
Other, we'd like to make a, a separate motion with, say, twenty feet or eighteen feet as an example. They could do so before moving on to the next item. Is that correct, Mr. Schuster?
Say that again, please. They could, you're inviting the commission to make an alternative motion?
If, I just wanted to make sure it's correct that another commissioner could make an alternative motion regarding the height requirements, uh, if they would like.
Yes, that's true. But now's the time. Got two more, uh, agenda items to get to.
Yes, sir.
And if there's, if there's no such motion heard by the chair, then, you know, we move on.
I would go on record as saying that if there was some specificity or you were to come back to us with something on the height that was a little bit more concrete, then maybe that you'd have a different outcome. If that wasn't a principle, no, 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 never, no.
Yeah. Am I, am I allowed to make a statement or?
Technically?
No, okay.
Well, it would be, it would be, uh, uh, an awkward circumstance for Mr. Tully to come back. He'd have to file a new petition, pay, pay fees again and, and start all over. At this point, if, if the commission has heard the matter and making a recommendation, that will close it out. Unless you're gonna table the third recommendation and allow him to come back at your next meeting.
Well, that, I mean, that's an acceptable number. I mean, we currently, we're fifteen.
I'd be willing to table it if we saw some problems.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, so how long can we table? I mean, we, we can only table it for one meeting, correct?
Uh, no, uh, you, you ta, technically, you table until there's a motion to take it off the table. Oftentimes, though, public bodies, uh, name a specific meeting at which the matter will be taken up again. You will be having another meeting. Uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Ray. There's another petition in the hopper. Is that not right?
Uh, yes, but all the documents have not been filed yet, so it's not complete.
Correct, but it, it, you know, there, there may be the end of the next month, uh, or early December, uh, there'd be another meeting.
Yeah, well, what's, what's gonna change from our standpoint for ten meetings? You know, are we gonna feel any different about it? If I saw what it was and it was X, Y, Z number, not just, it could be anywhere between fifteen feet and two stories. To me, that's, that's a bridge too far. And I don't want to put this poor guy out and make him go through, jump through all the hoops again. So, if we can table it and have him come back with something that maybe sways it by a vote or two, that may do it for him, and I'd be okay with that. But just a blanket twenty-three feet, like I said, was a bridge too far for me.
Can we call?
There's another option. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Oh, can we call Mr. Tully back to the podium?
Oh, sure, he can step up. Uh, and another option would be to simply put in your findings and, uh, and recommendation that, uh, there was discussion of, uh, an alternate height uh, and, um, uh, it's, uh, something less than twenty-three feet might be acceptable. And then the village board, you know, can take that guidance and come to its own decision on Mr. Tully's application. Uh, and, and, uh, I guess he would be encouraged by your comment to pin down how high this garage, uh, would need to be to satisfy the building code.
Or if twenty-three feet had X, Y, Z building materials and it looked like this, and this is how it would compare to the house, so really you're doing the neighborhood a favor. You make a case for it to the folks who really make the decisions. I think that's, that's a good idea. But like I say, just kind of sitting here at this point. Well, we can change the building code to twenty-three feet.
Yeah, it's, it's the zoning code that requires, uh, fifteen.
Correct.
That's another option is to move to, you know, to encourage the village zoning administrator, consider a higher height for accessory buildings.
Um, so realistically, um, with going through probably a couple of different contractors and getting a couple wins, um, I'm not sure if, you know, going over the winter is gonna be realistic depending on to what extent we need to repair the structure.
um, I'm not sure if, you know, going over the winter is going to be realistic, depending on to what extent we need to repair the structure. So I was anticipating realistically, probably early spring, late winter to begin construction. That being said, to get actual plans, it would probably require a few months, I would imagine. I, like, as I said before, also certainly willing to compromise if you guys think something in between is more appropriate and that will satisfy. I can, I'm happy with, to try to do something there, too.
I'm not sure having us throw out a number for you, Mr. Tully, to satisfy us is is fair to you or to the commission. I also don't think it's fair for us to to close out this with a with a no recommendation. Now, at the end of the day, the village board can overrule us right there at the last say. Uh, but I don't think it's fair for us to, you know, produce documents to the village board saying that we don't recommend this based on some of the conversation that we've had here tonight. We have approved or at least, you know, made motions for the zero setback on the west side. We have, you know, at least today an approval for the the back setback to get you started. I would like to table this, Mr. Schuster. Until such time, Mr. Tully has the ability to bring a planned setback for us without making a recommendation to the board at this time.
All right, well, if you would make that a motion so that your fellow commissioners can vote on it, that'd be the thing to do.
Do we table it indefinitely until Mr. Tully returns to the village with plans or do we?
Well, you can, you can table it indefinitely until you take it off the table.
You're talking about the southern setback?
I will. I will entertain a motion to table the height requirements for the variance at 304 Park Street until uh, our illustrious Mr. Tully speaks with a contractor or an architect. Once I think we have actually plans in our hand, we can untable that and then deliberate on our height requirements or limitations.
But just to be clear, we're still, Mr. Schuster, we're still leaving Mr. Tully in the same position where he doesn't have formal village approval. Right? I mean, he won't receive variance until the village board votes on this, correct?
Correct.
So he's still in the same spot where he may not be able to get a contractor because the village board hasn't voted on his variance because.
Well, that's his call. If he would, he could ask the village board to vote on the first two pieces if that's, he'd like, you know, if he wanted to proceed that way.
Will he have to position on the third piece?
Technically, yes. Uh, whether there'd be a way to finesse it, if if it would assist him in addressing the height question, uh, you know, that can be considered. I I'd have to look into that and talk to the village manager about it.
Is it better to table it and have him come back to us to change our recommendation or to amend our recommendation to the village board to consider some sort of specifics on whether or not, sort of, our discussion here, the meat of our conversation to the board and give him an opportunity between now and that board meeting to make his case, come up with some better drawings, something to promise them, which is the lesser of the evils.
Yeah, if 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 approved tonight, Mr. Ray, when does this go to the village board?
So theoretically, it could go next week, but if Mr. Tully would like more time, I don't believe there's any time requirement on this, Mr. Schuster. It could go whenever he is ready. Is that correct?
I'm, I'm pretty sure that's right. There is no time limit.
Yeah, I checked for one and didn't find one.
At the end of the day, it's not our decision. It's our recommendation. I'd be fine with sending a recommendation to the board that just a blanket amnesty is a nay. But if he had made a case for it and had the right sort of thing and could justify it, we.
Yes, because I, I want to get Mr. Tully rolling on this. His contract should be some level of, you know, fight element before he even starts rolling. So I, I I don't want to table this. I do, as we sit now, Mr. Chairman, yeah.
The question I have is what factors would occur that would make us vary from the 15 feet?
Right. Well, I have to, if if we make the motion to approve tonight, it's it's out of our hands. It would be up to the city, the village board then.
Yeah.
I mean, our recommendation would be, you know, right now, without without plans set.
Yeah.
There's a lot of discussion this evening on the heights. That, you know, we do not approve a blanket 23 feet, as Mr. Rappich said. But if Mr. Tully brings within to the village board use more specifics, then, you know, let the village board make that. If they choose to stick with our recommendation, which currently is, it sits at 15 feet.
But my concern is that currently 15 feet, all right, obviously proposed was 23 feet.
Right.
Okay, we felt that was excessive. All right, does that mean that 20 feet is going to be excessive excessive or 18 feet or where are we?
I remember that he could say a number that without some specifics, some materials, some plans, that would make me change. I don't know that it's a number thing. It's a.
Yeah, but I mean. Again, I don't see, you know, two months from now, why I would feel any difference on it because it's currently in statute, it's fit to regulations 15 feet.
And the recommendation to the board is nay unless he can make a case to them and again, would authorize the chairman to pass along the the spirit, the meat of our conversation, uh, that it wasn't a unanimous never nay, it was a not 23 feet, no questions asked.
Correct.
So, and it's not our decision at any point.
Let me, let me jump into the conversation and answer a question that Mr. Hoffman asked. In regard to the height, uh, he asked what, what level or what height would we be, would we be comfortable with? I myself am personally believe that we should stick to the 15 height limit unless Mr. Tully can give us a reason, a good reason why he should go higher and why he needs to go higher. And in that case, I might accept 16 feet, which is what he is now. Other than that, I oppose.
Hey, I just want to say. And we're seeing along a nay recommendation to the board as of this minute.
Okay. We can, we can change it. For the record, gentlemen, I just want to state that I believe Mr. Tully, if he wants a garage that is 23 feet, I believe that he should be able to have one. But that doesn't seem to be reading the charges tonight. So that's fine. We can make our recommendation and the village board can make the final ruling. At which point, Mr. Tully can come back and have the same conversation with them. And they can make a change to this variance for you. I just want to get you moving along so that you can, you know, some plans go on. I think this is the best way this evening is to provide our recommendation as it sits. And then when you come back to the village board, you have an opportunity to, you know, state your case. And maybe at that time, I would suggest, you know, having some kind of inventory of what's going on and why you think you need a higher.
And and I want to thank you, too. You did a nice job presenting this.
Thank you.
Not too long ago, we actually had a pencil drawn.
That's right. I'm glad.
So we can promote a motion to authorize the chairman to pass along our recommendations to the board? Got it.
Okay.
I think that's the last item on the agenda as to all the agenda items for tonight.
All of them. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tully. If you like, you may stay and listen to the rest of our meeting or you, you are welcome. You are not stuck here.
Yeah.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Have a good night, gentlemen.
Thank you. Thank you again.
As for our next item. I will entertain a motion to open a public hearing regarding a text amendment to the village zoning regulations to create the REC, recreational zoning district as a new type of business district in the village.
I'll make some motion.
Second, or agenda item B, aye?
Also.
Mr. Rappich?
Aye.
Mr. Neal?
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman?
Aye.
Mr. Rosetti?
Aye.
Mr. Schuster, I'm assuming, uh, since no one is here to speak, you can clarify this item and then we'll close the hearing.
Two things. First, notice of this public hearing was published in the Daily Herald newspaper on October 8, 2021. A certificate of publication is on file with the village clerk. I think I'll defer at the start to Mr. Ray, who has worked hard in putting together these proposed regulations in light of some village discussions with parties interested in establishing these types of uses.
Thank you, Mr. Schuster. Uh, Mr. Chairman, in the recent months, staff has been approached by several different developers, I can think of at least three off the top of my head, interested in recreational type uses for currently vacant land in the, in the village or to be annexed in the future. And staff has discovered that there are some recreational uses currently allowed in the current districts as they stand, but those are kind of scattered throughout. You could end up with a big industrial park with, you know, some type of recreational use in it or amongst other office type businesses. So uh, the proposal here is to create a specific recreational zoning district that would encompass all different types of recreational uses uh, to one, deal with the near term needs of these potential developments as they want to get moving. And two, to create a framework for better long term planning for this type of, uh, type of operation in the village. So this would create a new zoning district with its own regulations. Uh, you have a proposal before you tonight with those uses, special uses, uh, setback requirements and other regulations that can be amended, uh, in your recommendation if you would like. Um, and I'm happy to answer any other questions that you might have about this.
And just to be clear, at this point, there's no land that is assigned or yet to be assigned to this district. This, uh, would be a planning tool for those persons that Mr. Ray has referred to who may wish to, uh, look at or adopt these types of uses or annex to the village and establish these types of uses. So we're, I think the village zoning administrator is trying to get out in front of this a little bit, if you know what I mean.
Okay, that's exactly true. So essentially, any developer that wanted to use this district would have to come before this body in the village board to annex, rezone, get a special use for the first time since no land is currently zoned this way.
Was there a list of specific uses as part of the definition of recreational?
Yes, sir. In the packet, uh, there's a list of regular uses or permitted uses that are allowed outright. So if there were land that is, say, in the future that was zoned this way, a person could take by that land and just do this use. There's also a list of special uses that they would have to come before this board, like you've done before. Uh, that's in your packet. I can list off several if you'd like.
Would you be so mad?
Sure. So the permitted uses, um, include auditoriums, exhibition halls, meeting rooms, country clubs, uh, fitness centers and health spas, libraries, movie theaters and playhouses, museums, open space, public or private, uh, parks and recreational areas, playgrounds, skating rinks, studios for professional work or for teaching, any form of the arts. Uh, there's a list of examples there. Swimming pools, indoor and outdoor, wedding venues and accessory uses to those previously listed. And then the special use category, there are just a few, uh, horseback riding stables and trails, other indoor and outdoor event spaces, uh, including but not limited to stadiums, amphitheaters and bandshells, outdoor amusement establishments, water parks, miniature golf courses, kiddie parks, recreational camping for temporary use only, including motor coach parks, uh, solar energy systems, wind energy systems, sports and athletic facilities and other recreational uses deemed by, uh, this commission to be of the same general character. So it's very all encompassing, I think. And as Mr. Schuster stated, it allows, uh, for the commission and the village board to have a tool to deal with these types of things before they start coming to the village as they do seem to be coming.
Okay. One of my first immediate questions is, as it's written, could this or is this a direct overlay? Could it be used as a direct overlay for the existing park district facilities in the village? The parks, playgrounds? Are we aware of any sort of omissions?
I see what you're saying. Uh, so does any, does anything exist currently in this realm that is not included in this?
Basically, long story short, would we, would we be creating any sort of necessary variance just by putting this in place if we were to retroactively apply this?
Well, my first thought is that everything existing would be grandfathered in.
I'm sorry, do you mean in regard to the existing parks of the park district?
Yeah, if 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 we were.
Okay, the, the, well, let's just talk about that a minute. In, in essence, the village cannot tell another governmental body authorized by law how to use its property. However, there is at the same time an element of intergovernmental cooperation that's expected so that uh, the park district doesn't, uh, uh, acquire a space and tear down half of the downtown and say they're going to put a park there. Uh, but, uh, the, the locations of their parks, uh, the, the parks that are maintained by the district, otherwise so far comply with the uh, uh, planning and zoning of the village. And then what the park district actually does with that property is another question that's largely up to them.
Okay.
So for example, the, the minimum lot widths and depths that are required by this district would not apply to the park district as a separate government body.
Okay.
Right.
Okay. Because the only, the only thing I was thinking is just, I'd also like to possibly add dog parks since we already have a dog park in the park district's realm within the village. Might as well just get it in there squared away now.
Fine, included in your motion, you could include adding dog parks to either committed or special uses if you want.
Mr. Ray, from your memo, it appears that there is currently a developer in town off of Briar Hill Road is looking to utilize some space that they own. Can you talk a little bit to that?
Sure.
And how that's went down where we're at soon.
Sure. So Briar Hill Ventures, uh, came before this commission previously to annex and rezone part of their land that they purchased right on Briar Hill Road to be used for an industrial purpose, and that is underway. They're creating. The owners of Briar Hill Ventures have also purchased, um, additional acreage to the west, a large amount, I believe it's, uh, eighty-five acres or more. And they are doing a lot of master planning, kind of conceptual stuff right now on what they're going to do with all of that land. A good portion of it is in floodplain, so it's not buildable for other industrial purposes. So particularly the most western portions of the land that they own. Trying to get you some bearings here, just about starts into just about, what's up to WR Meadows. It's not quite that far west. I'm going to go as that direction. Uh, they have discussed using that area for wedding venue, uh, potentially with little, you know, small cabins for the wedding party and it's like using the existing water area back there for a water slide or fishing. Using that space for a coach park for, uh, they, they talk about higher end coaches, um, for temporary use, you know, seasonal use, nothing long term. So that's what they've discussed with us thus far. They, like I said before, I think they have submitted a petition for annexation for the rest of that land, but they still have to decide how they want to subdivide it. They still have to decide which portions of it they want zoned industrial versus something else. So uh, this, I would say that is the driver for this particular text amendment is that that is upcoming or forthcoming. Other interested parties have been, uh, a private person wanting to put cricket fields in the village somewhere. Um, and then another one wanting to, uh, have a small amusement park, uh, up north. But those cricket fields, yes, sir. But those are not, those are not necessarily active. Those were just inquiries, a spark.
And you're talking about south of Allen Road?
Yes, right. Yeah, for the Briar Hill Ventures, right.
Yeah, but not, not, not west of WR. The Schroeder Farm is just east of WR Meadows.
Right.
Just easier than, both of them between Schroeder Farm and Allen, or Briar Hill.
Briar Hill, okay.
Correct.
But, yeah, yeah. I'll go, unfortunately, Mr. Rosetti won't be able to see, but if you see this floodplain area here, it's, it's kind of all of this white area. Right here.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so they go just, they have a couple parcels just south of the tracks right there, the railroad tracks, and then most of the land that's not annexed, uh, is the north of the tracks.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question for Mr. Ray. How did we come up with this list of uses, both permitted and special? The reason I'm asking is because almost everything has something to do with recreation, but you also have solar systems and windmill systems and things that don't seem to apply to recreation. How did those get in there?
Yeah, I'll just do that real quick. I put those in there myself. One thing I'll say to start is that there's not a lot of communities that have a comprehensive recreational zoning district like this. I checked several, and I had to go all the way to Tennessee to find one that kind of uses a framework. Specifically, the solar and wind energy systems, that, I believe, by an ordinance not too long ago, a few years ago, maybe Mr. Schuster remembers, that was put in as a special use for, I want to say, every zoning district in the village or maybe almost all of the zoning districts in the village. So I just kept that consistency. If somebody wants to have green energy on their property, they can. But, you know, by all means, if you don't think that's appropriate, you can, with your motion, take it out.
Okay. And the other thing was the wedding venues. That doesn't seem to have anything to do with recreation either.
I guess that's just up for interpretation. That's one of the, you know, quote-unquote recreational uses Briar Hill Ventures has talked about as kind of an outdoor wedding venue space for their ceremonies and their receptions.
It seems to be more commercial than recreation.
Correct. I would say this, Mr. Rosetti, at the same time, it shares some of the same concerns, which would be traffic and parking, noise generation, you know, a large crowd, potentially a large crowd or gathering rather than, you know, a small retail store or something like that. So I think that's how it sneaks into this kind of category in that if you have live music and a 300 people at a wedding that's both indoor and outdoor, sure, there's a restaurant or banquet facility involved, but there's these other types of concerns that are not unlike recreational areas.
But I'll also add that any of the uses listed there could also be commercial. So it could be commercial skating rink. It could be a commercial swimming pool, a commercial horseback riding, so of that nature. This is a, one of the districts in the set of business districts in the village or would be.
If my understanding is correct, this is, essentially, this is bundling a lot of special uses and variances that apply to other zoning.
Sure.
Districts.
That would do it to its own. Sure. For example, I think I'll list under special uses here, other amusement establishments, outdoor amusement establishments, including water parks, roller coasters. I believe that is allowed as a special use in industrial districts right now. So that would just be an example. Combine these things, make it a cohesive area and able to plan better for these things in the future. It would also bring its own setback requirement. So currently, a roller coaster can be 40 feet off of the road in the industrial district, whereas here would have to be at least the setbacks required by this district.
Consult the special use eggs in their own basket, so to speak.
Mr. Ray, I am noticing here under special uses, under the block area yard involvement requirement, the height of the principal use is a lesser three stories or 50 feet, and the height of any accessory use on this property or under this district would be lesser than one story or 15 feet, which is what we just discussed. So that would keep some line with all of our accessory use heights.
Sure. And I think it's fair to say to that point that accessory uses might be taller in a recreational district. So if you wanted to amend that, I think that would make sense.
Right. For now, no, for this, for this. Well, Mr. Chairman.
Yes. In doing some of my own research on this before this meeting, as Mr. Ray mentioned, it is actually fairly rare for a dedicated recreational district. However, some of the other examples I did find actually included, just for sake of conversation, preservation or conservation, whether it was a forest preserve or even a cemetery. This is, this would be a, something that I would possibly think as an opportunity to specifically include in a village ordinance, things of that sort. So whether it was a preservation, conservation, cemetery, because right now, a lot of those types of things are allocated as special use and to business, residential, churches, parks. They're all zoned residential. They are zoned industrial. They are zoned what have you, but they were just put in as special uses. So I would almost say, just for the sake of discussion, is there anything else that we might want to discuss further or consider in addition to what's in front of us now? Mr. Schuster, off the top of your head, just as an example, cemeteries, like, are those special uses in whatever zoning district they happen to come up? Not that they grow on their own, but.
I don't know the answer to that without looking at the code. That's a good question. We haven't had a cemetery question, you know.
I know we did have a few, and it was, you know, when I was looking.
Yeah. Crown planned around the cemetery up on Harmony. The cemetery on Allen is outside the village. The cemetery, there's one down on Gutzelman, right? Yeah, that's outside the village as well. So there really hasn't been village issues. Those are township organized and run, and there really hasn't been a village issue about it. So I'd have to look at the code to see where they fit into a zoning category, because it's never come up.
And that's the only reason I bring it up is just for sheer sake of conversation, is just to add an additional possible subsection to this for preservation slash conservation, whether that's forest preserve or a historical preserve in a cemetery or something similar.
Yeah, it certainly, it allows open spaces of permitted use, public or private. So that is, I think, intended at least one way to address what you're saying.
So far, I checked.
And we could be, you know, that could be made more specific if you wished, you know.
I checked state residential and business districts, and so far, cemeteries are only included as a special use in residential districts.
Okay. So again, this.
So you get at that.
If, any of my, in my mind, like I said, if we're putting the special use eggs in their own basket, is it something to consider? Just something that maybe we could do away with a few extra special uses and variances, which I only would imagine kind of make Mr. Schuster's job a little harder, Ms. Vazquez's job a little harder, keeping track of variances over the decades. But that's just me for sake.
No, I mean, I think it's covered, as Mr. Schuster said, under open space, public or private.
Right. I mean, you could specifically add to that, such as cemeteries or, what would you say, conservation area, you know, you can, under the law of the state of Illinois, you can dedicate an area to conservation, record a deed on it, and that would inhibit future development of that land. So you could expand that list a little or just add it as a separate item unless, I mean, just generally, I would refer to Josh if he has some, something he's seen in his other reviews of ordinances elsewhere, why that might not be advisable.
Is it something, Josh, that you want to take offline? Because this is still in a very developmental phases, correct?
Yeah, this is, well, yeah, if you recommend this and the village board passes it, it will be an active zoning district. So it could, Thursday next week, it could be real, or if you fear, you could table it and discuss it more if you want to get more feedback from people or whatever. It's really up to you. As far as cemeteries specifically, I think cemeteries never came up in my research specifically, so I hadn't thought about it. I think open space, public or private, was meant to also include conservation areas and preservation areas, hiking trails, things like that. So I think it's covered there, but.
Yeah, I do too, but again, there's no harm in adding it as a more specific reference.
Okay. Well, it could always be dealt with later with like zoning overlays. All right. Any further questions or comments?
Nope.
And just to be clear, there's no members of the public present, right, to make any comment on this proposal?
Correct.
Yeah, thank you.
Outside of those of us that are supposed to be here, is a cemetery over there.
Very good.
Come on, nobody.
We got it. We picked out one.
Yeah. I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Was there a second?
Yes, Mr. Neal.
Thank you.
Mr. Ravish.
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman.
Aye.
Mr. Neal.
Aye.
Mr. Rosetti.
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. If I recall correctly and per my notes, the only real amendment we wanted to make to this motion was to include the verbiage dog park, correct?
I'm not willing to my cemetery.
If you want the cemetery in there, it'd be fine. No, I think we've deliberated and discussed on that. I just held up for discussion.
Yeah.
All right. I will entertain a motion recommending the approval of a text recumen, text amendment. Geez. Creating the recreational zoning district amended to include dog parks.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman.
Dog park.
Do I have a second on that one?
I amend the motion.
Can I make a motion to amend the motion?
Well, you could, since there's no second at this point, I think you could ask Mr. Hoffman if he would amend the motion.
I can amend the motion. What would you like to add to it?
Within permitted uses, Mr. Hoffman, I would like to add cemeteries as a permitted use of them.
Okay.
In the recreational district.
We will so amend the motion to include cemeteries.
Mr. Chairman, could I clarify if dog parks was a permitted use or a special use?
I would leave dogs were permitted, since up to this point, they've been special uses and extra labor work and paperwork.
Okay.
Well, a special use isn't really more paperwork than a zoning amendment to allow a dog park. So permitted or special doesn't really change the paperwork aspect.
What does it change?
With a special use, you have the ability to recommend, and the village board has the ability to impose conditions, maybe hours of operation, when the dogs have to be inside, if they're kept there, you know, distance from any residential zone because of the barking. I don't know. I'm just, you know, I'm shotgunning here. But a special use is a conditional use, so you have the ability to impose conditions on approval. And when you think there might be special concerns about it, that'd be a reason to classify it that way. Cleanup might be an issue. So think about that, Mr. Hoffman, and maybe let's get to your motion.
Okay, well, we can amend the motion to remove dog parks and include cemeteries. That would you like to do?
Well, I think the idea was cemeteries would be added as a permitted use and a dog park would be added as a special use. Is that not what I heard earlier?
Okay. Is it the general consensus that special use is more favorable?
Yeah.
Okay.
We need a second to that motion if Mr. Hoffman has made that motion.
I think we're building the motion.
Don't like, do you want me to do it again?
No, if that is your motion.
That is my motion.
I will second the amended motion.
All right.
So the motion was amended to include dog parks as a special use.
Yes.
And cemeteries as a permitted use.
That's right. Permitted, okay.
And Mr. Hoffman, motion?
Yes.
And who's, or who's second?
I'll second.
Sorry, did you call Mr. Rosetti to vote?
Yes, I did.
I'm sorry you broke up. Aye.
Yeah, you did.
Mr. Hoffman.
Aye.
Mr. Neal. Mr. Ravish.
Aye.
Okay.
Okay.
That was B2, Snowy on.
So now we need a motion on the petition as amended.
You need a motion for that?
Yes.
As amended, we just.
Right. The first, the last motion was to amend the petition in two particulars. Now the petition is before you for a vote.
So this is agenda item B2?
Yeah, I believe so. Yeah, I don't have the agenda in front of me.
I recommend that we approve the variance, I'm sorry, the REC recreational zoning district as amended by Mr. Hoffman, and that we recommend it.
Second.
Mr. Ravish.
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman.
Aye.
Mr. Rosetti.
Aye.
And Mr. Neal.
Oh.
All righty. Our next item, I will entertain a motion to open public hearing regarding a text amendment to the village zoning regulations to formalize public notice requirements for petitions for special use and for amendments to rezone property.
I will make that motion.
I will second, sir.
Mr. Rosetti.
Aye.
Mr. Neal.
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman.
Aye.
Mr. Ravish.
Aye.
All right, Mr. Chairman, a notice of this public hearing for the proposed text amendment about notices was published in the Daily Herald newspaper on October 8, 2021, and a certificate of publication is on file with the village clerk. This is another work that comes from the zoning administrator with the assistance of Mr. Ray. So I think he can introduce this petition to you.
Mr. Schuster, so by convention, on convention alone, the village has required applicants for special uses or rezoning to notify their neighbors by certified mail within 250 feet of that affected area. That has been the case for variances by ordinance, by state statute for a long time, but is not currently qualified for special uses and rezoning, despite the fact that the commission or previously the zoning board of appeals did require it. So this is really just a cleanup ordinance or text amendment to formalize that rule and make it consistent, as it has been in the past. Happy to take any questions. I did list there that this is consistent with many neighboring communities, including Huntley, Ingraham Grove, Westonby, Gilbert's, Elber and Marango.
So my understanding is there would no longer be notices required?
No, no, with this, the commission and previously the zoning board of appeals has always required them, but it was never in the ordinances that they had to.
Oh, okay.
So all this does is put them over, make it codified. It's just a cleanup ordinance.
So the former zoning board of appeals made some rules. They adopted some rules, but those rules were never put in the village code. They were just the working, working rules of the board. So this way, you can see that it's the same language for all three categories of petitions now, variance, special use and zoning amendment. We'll put it right in the zoning regulations themselves so that persons who are looking. persons who are looking at how to proceed will see all, all of the rules and regulations in one place.
Well, didn't you like the way we just made the rules as we went along?
And that would be the standard.
No, there, there was a formal action taken by the zoning board of appeals probably fifteen years ago when Mr. Oris Ruth was a member to adopt some notice rules. And they, I think those were targeted at special uses. But this way, any amendment, any special use, any variance, each, each of them will require the same type of notice under the same rules.
Okay, thanks.
Even Steven for everybody, and right in the book, so.
The record is that Steven with a V or B?
I'll second it.
Is there anyone in the public to speak to this text amendment, Mr. Chairman?
No, sir.
They all left an hour ago.
Mr. Hoffman.
Aye.
Mr. Rappich.
Aye.
Mr. Rosetti.
Aye.
Thanks, I will entertain a motion recommending the approval of a text amendment formalizing public notice requirements for petitions for special use and for amendments to rezone property.
So moved. I'll second it.
Mr. Neal.
Aye.
Mr. Rappich.
Aye.
Did I just circle your name? Uh, Mr. Hoffman.
Aye.
Mr. Rosetti.
Aye.
Okay, I will now entertain a motion authorizing the chair to report the results of an, of agenda items six A through two, right, is that through two?
Six, six A two.
Six A two, six B two and six C two to the village board trustees with appropriate findings of fact and recommendation.
I will so make that motion.
I'll second it, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Rappich.
Aye.
Mr. Rosetti.
Aye.
Mr. Neal.
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman.
Aye.
Any unrelated public comments?
Sure.
Did you say sure?
I said, no, sir.
Yeah, no, sir.
Uh, as we have no announcements, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Eight thirty-four P M.
Second.
Mr. Rosetti.
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman.
Aye.
Mr. Neal.
Aye.
Mr. Larry.
Aye. Larry, sorry Larry, no, I'm not good with the last names.